Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the City of Victorville Planning Commission Meeting for June 14th, 2017. We'll start with roll call please.
Chair Kirth.
Here.
Vice Chair Porter. Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Dew.
Present.
Commissioner Marsh.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join us for the invocation led to us by Commissioner Huber along with the pledge led by Commissioner Dew.
Heavenly Father, help us to remember that we are here to be served, here to serve, not to be served. Honor daily of the many who need to be helped. Guide us to be there for others and assist them in times of need. Father, be with the Congressman and the four people that got shot back in Virginia. Amen.
Amen. I am the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And next we have a set of meeting minutes that need to be approved from May 10th, 2017.
I move.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Dew to approve the regular minutes of the meeting, May 10th, 2017, a second by Vice Chair Porter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes have been approved.
Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing items, we'll start with agenda item number one, please.
Thank you Chairman Kirth. Item number one is case PLN 16-20. It is a site plan and conditional use permit to allow for a multi-tenant commercial development comprised of a fuel station, convenience store, restaurant, and car wash, and a conditional use permit to allow for beer and wine sales in conjunction with a convenience store with an environmental exemption. This is located on the northeast corner of East Sage Street and Outer Seventh Street. The applicant is requesting this proposal to construct a 5,300 square foot convenience store with restaurant and a car wash and an eight-pump ARCO fueling station with service canopy. The approximate one acre site is located within the Civic Center specific plan, Zoned Civic Commercial. It complies with all relevant municipal code and specific code, specific plan standards. Staff recommends approval as conditioned. There also is an add-on, staff would recommend that you add Condition 56 to the site plan, which would prohibit sexual-oriented merchandise to be sold at the facility. This is a condition that's been used on prior fuel stations. And also, I'd like to report that the Sheriff's Department is not opposed to the issuance of the finding of public convenience or necessity for the alcohol sales. They also note that the, since it's beer and wine, it's not an issue, but the real issue is the liquor stores in the vicinity. And with that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this point from the Commission?
Chairman, I just want to clarify. In our workshop, I thought you mentioned that there's a threshold of 20% that this year.
So there's a couple of thresholds that would kick you into the category where the city is required to issue a finding of public convenience or necessity before the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control would issue an alcohol license. One of those is if the city's census tract has a higher ratio than the county for alcohol licenses. In this case, it slightly does. I think it's one license above the county average. And second to that, there's a, if it's in a high crime area, and the Sheriff's Department noted in this area, I believe it's in a beat that's between Mojave and Green Tree, but it is in a higher crime area. They didn't say that it was over the 20%, but they did note that it is in an area of higher crime than most of the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing if we have anyone here to speak to us on agenda item number one.
I'm representing the owner with the architectural engineering firm for this project, and I'm here just to answer any questions that you might have related to the project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I don't see any, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to us on agenda item number one? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the Commission for Determination.
Chairman Kirth, I find the project category exempt under Section 15332, titled Infill Development Project of the State Guidelines to Implement the California Environment Quality Act. Adopt Resolution Number P-17-020 approving the site plan portion of case number PLN 16-00020 and add Condition Number 56. Adopt Resolution Number P-17-020 approving the gas station condition use permit portion of case number PLN 16-00020 and adopt Resolution Number P-1702 to approving the beer and wine condition use permit portion of case number PLN 16-00020 with a finding public convenience of necessity.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Vice Chair Porter, for consideration of PLN 16-0020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved.
Agenda item number two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Item number two is PLN 17-6. It is a request to change the general plan from low-density residential to commercial and change the zoning from R1 to PUD on 17 vacant acres near the new Walmart that went in at Palmdale Road and Highway 395. The lots, as you can see on your screens, are long and narrow right now, so therefore staff didn't support just changing to commercial and letting each of them develop individually. Therefore, the request for the planned unit development, PUD zoning on it, would require those property owners to work together and to provide a design that incorporates a development that would use reciprocal parking, reciprocal access, possibly reciprocal trash enclosure locations, limit access to the streets. It's, for commercial, it's not, you know, it's not very, could be detrimental for commercial from Palmdale Road. When Palmdale Road develops, there's visibility back there, won't be very good. So, but the potential for possible office or even auto repair, some specialization we could see occurring, maybe even light industrial. Maybe they come back to you in the future and request a change to light industrial where it's some warehouse with an office space or even a retail component in the front with a warehouse in the back might work. But at this time, we're proposing commercial with a planned unit development to, with standards that will do those things that address our concerns. And before, if the Commission chooses to approve this proposal, staff would recommend that we just add some language to the very front of the standards on page 75 to add an intent paragraph to kind of state those things. They're stated in the staff report, however, for staff to work with this PUD in the future, it would be good for them to be stated at the very beginning of those standards. So, with that, staff's available if you have any questions.
Okay, thanks. Any questions on this one? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to us on item number two? Okay. Seeing no one, I will then close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Are there any further questions before the motion's made?
I didn't quite understand that.
I would just like the Planning Commission to make a motion recommending approval to the City Council with the addition of an intent paragraph, taking language from the staff report. That will work.
I'll recommend a City Council adoption of the attached negative declaration pursuant to Section 15074 of the California Environment Quality Act and the standards that you recommended. Adopt Resolution Number P-17-018, recommended the City Council approval of the general plan amendment portion of case number PLN 17-00006 and adopt Resolution Number P-17-019, recommending City Council approval of the zone chain portion of the case number PLN-17-00006.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, second by Commissioner Dew, to recommend approval of PLN 17-0006 to the City Council for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved or recommended to City Council for approval. The earliest City Council hearing date can be July 18th due to the July 4th holiday.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, please.
Thank you Chairman Kirth. Item number three is case PLN 17-11. It is a tentative parcel map and a site plan to allow for the creation of two parcels from one parcel and the development of a 2,100 square foot restaurant on a vacant 1.27 acre parcel with an environmental exemption. This is located on the northwest corner of Bear Valley Road and Locust Avenue. The restaurant is a sit-down and drive-through Dunkin' Donuts establishment. The proposed tentative map would allow for the parcel one, which is on the corner, to house the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through restaurant. Parcel two would remain vacant at this time, but it would, it is required to maintain reciprocal access between the two parcels, so parcel two would be able to develop with the access that's provided to Dunkin' Donuts, which is one drive entrance on Bear Valley Road and one drive entrance on Locust. With that, staff finds that it meets all Title 16 standards, recommends approval, and we're available if you have any questions.
Thanks. Any questions for staff? Then I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. I have a card from the owner applicant, Mr. Hout.
Good evening Chairman Kirth and members of the City of Victorville Planning Commission. Just want to thank you for your time this evening to hear our item and just state how excited we are to be coming to the City of Victorville. We've reviewed the staff report, all the conditions, we accept all of them, and I'm available to answer any questions if you have them.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on agenda item number three? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for Determination.
I move to find the project categorically exempt under Section 15332 entitled Infill Development Projects and move to adopt Resolution P-17023 approving the parcel map portion of the case and adopt Resolution P-016 approving the site plan portion of case, case number PLN 1711, subject to all conditions of approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Porter, a second by Commissioner Marsh, to approve project plan, PLN 17-00011. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The project has been approved.
Thank you. Agenda item number four is a request from the applicant to be continued. Well, I will open up the public hearing on number four if there's anyone to speak on number four. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and I'll go ahead and make the motion to continue agenda item number four to the Planning Commission meeting of July 12th, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion by Chair Kirth, a second by Commissioner Huber, to continue PLN 176-00029 to the July 12th meeting of the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be continued to July 12th regular meeting.
Agenda number five, it looks like I may have a personal real estate brokerage conflict on this item with a possible neighboring development parcel, so I felt it would be best for myself to recuse from this item and turn it over to Vice Chair Porter.
Thank you Vice Chair Porter. Item number five is case PLN 17-3. It is a site plan and conditional use permit to allow for the construction of a fueling station and convenience market with an accessory car wash, a conditional use permit to allow for alcohol sales for beer and wine only, a tentative parcel map to allow for the creation of two parcels from one existing parcel approximately three acres in size, and a proposed environmental mitigated negative declaration. This is located on the southwest corner of Balsam Avenue and Nusqually Road. The applicant Circle K intends to develop approximately a 5,800 square foot convenience market with beer and wine sales, an automated car wash, and a 10-pump fueling canopy. The applicant is also requesting to split the three-acre parcel into a two-acre parcel which will contain the Circle K development and a one-acre parcel remaining for future development. The sale of beer and wine in conjunction with the fueling station at this location requires a finding of public convenience or necessity for approval and also a conditional use permit in accordance with Victorville Municipal Code standards and ABC standards. The proposed development meets all municipal code requirements for the underlying C2 Zone District. The proposal includes discretionary uses such as the fueling station, alcohol sales for beer and wine for off-site consumption, which would be, which could be detrimental to sensitive uses in the immediate vicinity such as single-family homes, apartments, and a church-school campus. However, the project is conditioned to meet all municipal code standards such as prohibited single-serve alcohol beverages and exterior alcohol signage, which will mitigate the development's impact on the surrounding area to a level of less than significant. Given these conditions, staff recommends approval as conditioned. There is also an add-on Condition 70, which would include a requirement for the applicant to install a block wall along the south property line. Staff is recommending that that be added into the approval if this project is approved. And also, I'd like to report that the Sheriff's Department is not opposed to the issuance of the finding of public convenience or necessity.
Are there any questions from the Commission? Just, and I'll open the public hearing and ask Josh Gerbach?
Would the applicant do his slideshow first? Sorry.
I don't know which, oh, there he is.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, David.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. David Sheshevsky with Land Development Consultants on behalf of Circle K. I wanted to take just a few minutes quickly. Staff has done an excellent job in their report going through and articulating what we're proposing to do here and conditioning it appropriately to really offset any limited impacts that the store may have, but I wanted to point out in terms of a few things here. First and foremost, location. As you can see from the slide in front of you, the red area is the project site. The eastern two-thirds of that is where the proposed convenience store is, and we think it's ideally located for this type of use. Very close proximity to Interstate 15, has very good access points off of two major roads, which will really limit the impact of traffic on the road infrastructure and the surrounding As staff pointed out earlier, in terms of site plan, we've spent many months working with Scott on this and designing this facility to, you know, not only meet the basic needs of your code here, but in a lot of respects exceed those needs, and one of which is the landscape. As Scott pointed out in the staff report, I think we're required to have four or five trees on this site. There's 27 trees here, notwithstanding all the other plantings. And so again, the intent here is to really make this a very visibly pleasing facility from both the streetscape and while you're on the facility site itself. It is also designed with a car wash internal to the site as opposed to on the Balsam roadside, again, with the intent to limit the impact of the adjoining residential to the east. You know, car washes can generate some noise if they're not appropriately designed, but again, by moving it internal, we have additional C2 property to the west, C2 property with a tank to the south, so the impact of any noise out of that car wash would be nominal to any of the adjoining properties. This is one of Circle K's new prototype stores. We have a number of these projects under development throughout the state and really throughout the country, being almost 6,000 square feet. And the real focus of this store is really on food service, and so I wanted to give you a bit of a visual perspective of the inside of the store. First, I'll start with the floor plan. As you can see, this is the floor plan looking down. The checkstand is in the very back middle section of the store, and it's intentionally designed that way, so the clerks and the other employees have a very clear view of all the activities within the store and through the windows on the entire front of the store, so it's very easy to monitor all the activities on the site. In addition to that, the shelvings, the aisles are very wide. This is not a cramped and packed facility, so again, with customers coming in and out, we have very good visual acuity on the front door as well as all the activities within the store. This is one of the actual stores that was built recently in Arizona, and I'll just go through these slides quickly to give you, you know, a visual perspective. You can see obviously architecturally, it's, we think it's very nice, offers very wide open feeling. If you'll notice on the roof, you'll see the TV monitors and a number of security cameras. Circle K, as a very large organization, spends a lot of time focused on security, whether stores are in good areas or in tougher areas to operate. And so these stores typically have between 16 and 20 security cameras, both internal and external. You'll see monitors there in front of the checkstand, so the clerks when they're working can look up the monitor, monitor both internal and external activities. As well as on this view, you'll see a monitor closer to the front door, so as soon as people come in the door, they're seeing their picture on a monitor. And having worked with a lot of different police departments across the country, that in and of itself becomes a crime deterrent because people are focused on, somebody's taking my picture. So in addition to the cameras, the other thing we've done here is we also have door frame cameras. So part of it historically has been when you have criminal activity at any retail operation, there's always a problem of clarity, who was the person doing it, that we get a good picture for ID. These door frame cameras are literally in the door frame at about eye-level height, so as people come in, you have a very clear digital picture of everybody coming in and out. All this video and pictures are backed up digitally, they're in color, and stored for a minimum 30 days just in case somebody would happen. It could be something as simple as a credit card theft on a lot or some other activity that the police may want to be involved in. But again, you can see it's a very open, inviting environment, big focus on fresh food here, both prepared packaged foods where you could come in and get a prepared sandwich or come in and get a fresh salad, slice of pizza, breakfast burrito, very focused on food and drinks here too. That's basically the entire left wall, the inside of the store is soft drink offer and a very premium coffee offer. Again, key products that people stop at convenience stores for. The other of which is what we're requesting tonight is a beer and wine sales. That is a key component of what we sell, like most convenience stores or frankly, most grocery stores. People stop there, they want to get their gas, they want to pick up a gallon of milk, and maybe on the way home, I want to get a six-pack of beer and take it home with me. And so it's part of the key overall component of our marketing. Again, a picture on the fresh food here. So these stores have been very successful for us. We think in terms of this location, this is an ideal location for this type of facility. Again, it's proximity to the interstate, proximity to very good road systems. The project will also result in some significant road improvements to Nusqually Road as well as Balsam Avenue with medians on Nusqually and a partial median on Balsam. Again, the two drives that we had previously showed in and out of the facility, the drive on Balsam. as the drive on Nusqually, the northernmost drive, is limited to ride-in, ride-out access. So their only full access drive is to the south. Again, design focus that we limit any impacts on infrastructure improvements. As to the alcohol sales, Circle K is an exemplary alcohol retailer. They spend extensive efforts, training employees. New employees go through a full 40-hour training program. All employees are trained semiannually on marketing and sales of restricted products, so things like alcohol, tobacco, those kinds of things. So they have a very heightened sense of concern about both training and security, and a large part of which has resulted in the design of these facilities. As Scott pointed out, the project meets all your code requirements, and as I mentioned in some respects exceeds those. We think it's a great project for this location and will bring some goods and services to this area of town, which frankly, doesn't have these type of goods and services here for folks traveling on Nusqually Road. With that, we would request your approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the Commission?
I don't have a question. I'd like to make an observation. My observation is it was brought to my attention, to our attention regarding the amount of significant improvements that Circle K as a provider has taken cameras, videotapes of individuals very seriously, and I commend Circle K for that because it's increasingly important that people not only feel safe, but also feel secure. And there is a difference, and I thank you for that. You're back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Josh Gerbach?
Well, again, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I do appreciate it and the opportunity to be before you tonight. As a pastor at First Assembly of God and Victor Valley Christian School and a parent of three students and a husband of a wife who teaches there, I'm very concerned, again, about a gas station and convenience store being located right next to our church and school that is selling alcohol. I'm asking you tonight to please oppose giving this conditional use permit. Your own documents that were listed state that the census tract already has an overconcentration of alcohol and is already over the legal limit from the ABC Board. You've already approved a 76 station just a few months ago, and now there's another Shell station that wants to go in kitty-corner to the church. So how many gas stations are we going to have around our church and school? When really is enough is enough? I have great concerns about the safety of my kids, the children in our community. There are over 250 kids that I'll be meeting in church even tonight. There are over 350 preschoolers through 12th grade kids that'll be meeting throughout the week as school starts again, and I believe they'll be impacted again in a negative way. The alcoholic beverage control board gives grounds for denial for an establishment within 600 feet of a school or the immediate vicinity of a church. We are both. Prove to me that the findings of a public convenience or necessity is true. Really? This is necessary for the public? Why cannot these gas stations be built on the other side of the freeway or in areas adjacent to the freeway? Is it truly necessary to build next to the church and the school? I would challenge you to look at other vacant areas. We saw maps that were before so they could easily accommodate a gas station and convenience store that serves alcohol but is away from the church. You have stated in your reports that this establishment selling alcoholic beverages shall not result in nuisance activities within their premises or in close proximity to their premises, including but not limited to disturbances of the peace, illegal drug activity, public drunkenness, drinking in public, harassment of passersby, gambling, prostitution, sale of stolen goods, public urination, theft, assaults, batteries, acts of vandalism, littering, loitering, graffiti, illegal parking, excessive loud noises, especially in the late night or early morning hours, traffic violations, curfew violations, lewd conduct, sales to minors or police detentions and arrests. Have you been to any of the gas stations around our area? I sure have, and I've seen many of those things take place in those locations. Have you not experienced those negative impacts? Our church itself has personally dealt with things being stolen and those being taken to gas stations and sold illegally, and so I see that around us. I think those things will happen. In addition, you state that this establishment in your documents selling alcoholic beverages shall not result in adverse effects to the health, peace, or safety of persons residing or working in the surrounding area. I work in this area, and I represent thousands of employees, children, students, parents, and a church congregation that I believe will be adversely affected, and our peace and safety will be compromised. I'm asking you to please consider opposing the selling of alcohol in your First Assembly of God and Victor Valley Christian School and to not issue this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. John Martin?
Thank you, Commission, for allowing me to take a few moments to address this issue that's very important to us. I am the lead pastor at First Assembly of God Church and also superintendent of schools for Victor Valley Christian School, a school that has been and continues to be a choice of the high desert and exemplary school of a choice that parents have placed their students in. My two children have graduated from there, and my wife continues to serve as a sixth-grade teacher on the staff there. I echo what Pastor Josh just has said to you as well. We have about 3,500 people that attend our church on a Sunday, a youth group that meets on Wednesday nights of 250 students. We have a college ministry that meets on Friday nights, about 150 students that are a part of what goes on in the ministry of our church. We have a preschool. In addition to our K-12 school, there's a lot of activity that takes place on a daily basis on our campus. And I stand before you tonight. I know that the chairman has recused himself this evening. I remember the last time we stood before you, that he directed the meeting at that time as vice chair, as the acting chairman had recused himself at that point. And he said to us in the last meeting that we had that he read personally the over 100 letters that were submitted. We chose not to do that on this one, but I can guarantee you that the church feels still the exact same way as we did on this last go-around within the last year. We have concerns on several fronts. One is the number of gas stations now that we're looking at. As this commission approved it, it went before the city council. The city council approved it directly to the east of us. Now, this property directly to the south of us, and the concern of the sale of alcoholic beverages is the key thing for us, the key sticking point for us. We also know that signage has gone up to the southwest of us where it says future site of a Shell station. So we're looking at, and obviously, I don't know where the third one stands with you at this point, and I know you take these one at a time, and I understand that, but I also understand the impact of a region that at the time was pointed out and was pointed out tonight as well, has been saturated with the sale of alcoholic beverages. I understand that as a business, they would want to do so. I totally get it. I come from a family of business owners and business executives, and so I'll be the first to say, the last thing we want to do is stop the growth of the high desert, stop the growth of Victorville. That's not where our heart is with this. But truly, that we would see this done in a way that would be really productive for the community. We all know, once a gas station goes in and the convenience store is associated with it, that will tend to bring about a certain result in clientele into an area, and that will continue for years to come. So we have a huge concern about that. ABC does make the recommendation, and I know that you know it well because we made that pitch to you last time around, that within 600 feet of a school, a church, or a park, ABC recommends no alcohol sale. And you chose to not do that and to supersede that last time, and my concern is if we do that again, how many times are we doing that and we're dealing with other issues at stake? And so, we have a big concern there. We also, I just would like to say to you that we have, with the opening of on-ramps and off-ramps on the freeway, we have now gone to 24/7 surveillance personnel on our 19-acre property, and we have dealt with a lot of theft that has taken place, literally. A good example of that would be a car that was stolen out of our parking lot not that long ago in broad daylight. So issues have ramped up for us, and so as a neighbor to this project, right across the street from us to the south, we have a big concern as to what's going to come across our street and the additional impact that we're going to have on not all our property, but here in the high desert as well. And so, thank you for hearing our cause, and we would highly recommend and ask that you would not grant this opportunity for alcoholic sale on this property. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Commission?
Yes, I have a question. First, could you come back, please? Yes, thank you. You mentioned incidents that have occurred, or it was mentioned, incidents that occurred regarding the theft of a car, and I suspect other types of crimes or disobedience has occurred. So do you have police reports regarding those things?
Yeah, we have done those police reports time and time again.
Could you give me an estimate as to how many? I mean, give me an idea whether or not you file reports daily, weekly, monthly? I don't know.
I would say for us, six to 10 a year, probably, something like that. I don't know if it's monthly, but we do have quite a few thefts, primarily in the back area. Now, some of it's gone down because we've had to spend a lot of money on 24-hour security guards that we have now. We've had to spend a lot of money on state-of-the-art security equipment, which, you know, our friend's doing as well because there's issues. And that's why we're concerned about is that we have these issues already that we're dealing with, which they recognize because they're having to do all those things to stop it, too, and that's just going to raise the level of all these issues more and more and more. So I'd have to look back for all of them. We've had cars stolen. We've had our trailers being broken into. We've had keys stolen. We've had, I've had credit cards stolen, and that's what, on a gas station, they took the credit card and started giving out, selling gas to people, you know? So those things happen. That's why we're just very concerned. This, again, raises the level one more notch, and we already have another one. Now we have another one, and what's going to be the stopping point? So we're just very concerned about that.
I just want to mention this to you. I recognize that as relates to crime, there are times, I think no one can say that there's crimes that does not, that always occur with alcohol. I think some crimes are committed without the intent of alcohol, possibly drugs or bad behavior. I think those things exist, too. But I thank you for your testimony. Madam Chair, if I might, I'd like to speak to the petitioner. Do you know if Circle K's protocol, when it comes to disobedient people, or if someone was to come in, let's say slurring their speech, obviously, they may be under the influence of alcohol or some other substance. So is there a protocol to address those people?
There is, Mr. Commissioner. They have a fairly lengthy training program. Again, as I mentioned, their early initial training and the ongoing semi-annual training. But if someone comes in who appears to be either intoxicated under the influence or something else, clearly, they're not going to sell any alcohol to them. If they need assistance, Circle K does have sort of a safe house program, and we see this not only with folks maybe dealing with drug or alcohol abuse, but runaways, other people who are struggling in life. And so, Circle K tries to partner with local police, local aid organizations. You know, out here in California, it's Red Cross. In Arizona, it's United Cerebral Palsy. And so, through those connections, people who need assistance can get assistance in that fashion. And again, you know, we're not going to sell any, you know, someone comes in intoxicated, we clearly don't sell to those people.
And my last question to you. I'm concerned with safety and security of individuals, especially employees where they may be subject to be robbed, and how do, I guess, I'm not asking you to go into great details, but how do you address that?
So again, like any retail business that's open 24/7, there's always a risk of people working. What we try to deal with is a well-lighted facility and activity. Most police will acknowledge and tell you that on a retail facility or any facility where there's activity, crime is going to be less. It's the dark hours, it's where facilities are closed, there's no activity, there's no monitoring, that's what facilitates crime. Frankly, the other thing with these new stores, and again, having worked with and knowing a lot of police officers, they like these stores, and it's not because they have to come here for crime. They want to come here and get out of their car for 15 minutes and have a cup of coffee or get something to eat or get a bottle of water, sit down and do some reports. If you remember, on our floor plan, there were an area up front, and there were some tables. They're kind of benchtop tables, high bar-type tables, and a lot of times, police will come in and sit there and fill out reports for half an hour. Having a police presence on the lot at midnight, at 2:00 a.m., at 6:00 a.m. is a crime deterrent. And so, again, our employees are trained repeatedly. Don't encounter, don't chase, don't pursue. If there's an incident, you call the police. And Circle K reports all incidents, and it could be, you know, unfortunately, some kid coming in stealing a pack of gum, or somebody come in, you know, having a fight on the parking lot, or any other activities that may go on. I mean, a lot of times, we can't control what our customers are doing, but we do try to partner very closely with law enforcement to address that issue.
Okay. I want to say, say thank you for letting me know that lighting, cameras, and high vigilance in observing individuals is, to some degree, a deterrent. Thank you for your testimony. You're back, Madam Chair.
Are there any other questions?
On the, excuse me, on the slideshow, the different locations, where is the beer and wine located? Didn't really show that. What part of the store?
I don't know if I have that, do I?
It's on the floor plan.
I believe it's on the applicant's.
Yeah, it was on our, I know I have it on our presentation. I'm not sure if you do.
I don't.
To answer your question, if, so if you walked in the store, and it's on the far-back right-hand corner, there's a walk-in cooler, if you will, which is where we keep beer and wine, and then we have usually one or two other single-cooler doors that would have products in there. And so, it's rare that there are floor displays. Occasionally, we'll do seasonal, you know, type promotions, those kinds of things, but typically, it's in the far-back right-hand corner of the store.
So it's not, as you walk in, it's not the initial focal point of?
It is not. No, it is off. There is signage over the door that says, you know, Beer Cave or something to that effect, so you could walk in and pick up a six-pack or a 12-pack. But again, when you walk in, which are really, the focus of these stores, what we want people to focus on is that big food offer that's just to the left of the checkstand when they walk in.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to Agenda Item Number Five? Then I will close the public hearing and ask the pleasure of the Commission.
Madam Chair, I adopt the attached mitigated and negative declaration with a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the site plan and associated conditional use permit and find tentative parcel map 19651 exempt from the California Department Quality Act pursuant to sequel Section 15315, adopt resolution number P-17-012 approving the fueling station conditioning use permit portion of the case number PLN-17-3, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Adopt resolution number P-17-013 approving the conditions use permit portion of case number PLN-17-3 allowing beer and wine sale for off-site consumption with a finding of public convenience and necessity, subject to the attached condition of approval. And adopt resolution number P-17-014 approving the site plan portion of case number PLN-17-3, subject to the attached conditions of appro, and added the condition number 70. Adopt resolution number P-17-015 approving case number PLN-17-3, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Vice Chair Porter, to approve Project PLN-17-00003. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The project has been approved with Commissioner Kirth recused from the, absent of, from the vote.
Thank you, Chairman Kirth. Item Number Six is Case PLN-17-9, tentative parcel map with an environmental exemption to allow for the creation of three new parcels from one existing four, four acre parcel. Uh, this is another Circle K, uh, application. Um, their facility for a convenience store was approved by the commission in 2014. It included a parcel map. Uh, the parcel map has since expired. Uh, the overall entitlements, however, are still in plan check and ne, nearing their building permit issuance. Um, essentially, the applicant's requesting that you re-approve the map that was approved back in 2014. Um, staff finds that it meets all relevant, uh, municipal code standards and recommends approval. We're available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this one? Seeing that, I'll, I'll open up the, uh, public hearing on item number six. Is the applicant, would you like to speak on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm here to answer any questions on this. I think staff has done a great job of this. It's a fairly straightforward project that's really, again, just, uh, sort of reapproval of the old parcel map, if you will.
Yes. Any, uh, questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on item number six? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the Commission for questions or a decision.
Chairman Kirth, I'd like to move that we find that project categorically exempt under Section 15315 of the California Environmental Quality Act entitled Minor Land Divisions and adopt Planning Commission Resolution P-17-11 approving case number PLN-17-9, subject to all, uh, conditions of approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Porter, a second by Commissioner Marsh, to approve planning case PLN-17-00009. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The project has been approved.
Thank you. Item Number Seven, um, is, uh, being requested by the city for, um, to continue to the next meeting. Is that correct?
It's to the August 9th meeting.
Okay. Um, do I need to open the public hearing on, on something like this?
Yes, you should.
I'll, uh, open up the public hearing on item number seven, if there's anyone to speak on number seven. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll make the motion to, um, continue this, uh, item to the, uh, Planning Commission, August 9th, 2017 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry. Thank you. I have a motion by Chair Kirth, a second by Commissioner Huber to continue, uh, the case number DEV-16-00006 to the August 9th regular meeting of the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be continued to August 9th.
In compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary for the Planning Commission to make time available for the public to address the Planning Commission, so is the one gentleman in the audience like to address us? Okay. Thank you. Number Eight is the, um, Hispar Unified School Needs Analysis Summary. Um, any discussion or questions on that document? Um, okay, well, that's it. At this point, Commissioner's comments. We'll start with, uh, Vice Chair Porter.
I, I don't have anything at this time.
Commissioner Marsh?
Uh, nothing at this point.
Commissioner Huber?
Coming.
Commissioner Du?
Yes. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I would like to, um, rest my, um, regrets regarding what had taken place in Washington, DC as Commissioner Huber brought it to our attention, and also that I'm looking forward to July the 4th, and I probably won't see you until sometime after July the 4th. So I'm hoping that everyone has a safe and prosperous, uh, July the 4th. Thank you. I yield back.
I have nothing. Any comments from staff? Nothing? Okay, thank you all. Meeting adjourned.